All right, we're going to call to order this regular business meeting for the New Market School Board, and as always, we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Julia, if you could lead us in that, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Following our agenda as it is, I open the floor, as we do every public meeting, to public comment. If anyone has any public comment tonight.
Nothing.
Nope, I don't think there's going to be much.
No news is good news.
Well, I'll go ahead and close public comments since no one seems to be racing to the mic. We've had a very exciting day in our district. The First Lady of New Hampshire, Valerie Sununu, visited elementary school this morning, and she read a book that she personally donated to our school library, to some third graders and some kindergarteners, and she talked to both groups about the books that the students enjoyed. Meredith, you can come on up. And with the assistance of Scholastic Books, donated over 100 books to our school. And her goal, as she spoke this morning, is to keep students engaged in reading over the summer. And it was obvious that Mrs. Sununu is and was an educator, and she engaged in the courage to students with whom she spoke in both settings today. It was very nice to see. Now, tonight, we are going to the other end of the spectrum, from kindergarteners to 12th graders, as we recognize the top 10 students in the class of 2017, and the faculty and staff members who are retiring at the end of the school year after various levels of service, and we'll talk about each of them individually. But before we begin that, and as we're waiting, Principal Mizouni, we still have one more person coming, right? Okay, a couple more coming. So before we do that, I want to make a special presentation for our student on the school board, Julia Leary. Julia has been a dedicated and active participant in our school board meetings for the past two years. During that tenure, Julia and her contagious smile, which is happening right now, have shared all the happenings in spirit at both schools with us at the meetings, and she has represented the students of our district well in every meeting, and also through the hiring process of our now superintendent, Meredith Nato, and it has been a pleasure to work with Julia. She is a marvelous example of New Market student, successful in academics, as we'll learn in a few minutes, athletics and extracurricular activities. As tough as it is for us to see her go, we wish you the best, Julia. And we wish you the best at UNH as you go next year and beyond, and I hope that you'll do us the pleasure of coming back in the future to share all that you do, because I know you're going to do great things. So thank you for your time with us. And I met Catherine, correct, who's going to be coming next year, so Catherine, welcome next fall. We're still waiting for two of the top 10. Do we want to flip?
Do you want to start?
Do you want to start with them, and then bring them to the end?
Sure.
We'll have Principal Mizouni come up and introduce the students of the top 10. It is amazing to have these students in our presence tonight, and it's exciting to hear what they've done as students of New Market High School, and what they'll be doing in the future. And Chris, I'll come down, and then we'll all come down. No, go ahead.
As you know, I am probably one of the best jobs in the district, maybe even in the world. You ask me to come over all the time. I really mean that, because you ask me every once in a while to come up and present really awesome things about kids and what we do, and that's a real point of pride. So it sounds kind of funny, but it's true, and we have great kids here in New Market. Again, time and time again, you ask me to come up and tell you about the accomplishments that we share. So I'm going to introduce a few more tonight for the last time, which is tough for me. These guys are eighth graders when we started, so it's really rewarding to kind of watch that. Again, it's one of the sort of the neatest things about our junior senior high school is its longitudinal growth. But what they didn't know is I was going to make them introduce themselves. So I'm going to say their names, but you're going to see from their own words why they're so amazing. As Michelle said, we do have a few students on our top 10 who are not with us right now because they're at SST graduation ceremony. Not currently with us are Owen Balarja, Madigan Farnes, Kevin Parren, and Britt McKinder. With us, Ms. Ashley Berthew, Mr. Alyssa Cody, Mr. John Doust. Oh, you're up.
Come on down.
Totally up there. It's the last time we get to tell you something to do. Donovan Harrington, Ms. Julia Leary, Mazia Malinsky. John said he wanted to start.
Thank you, John. All right. My name's John, and I'll be going to UNH next year with zoology as my major. I've had an awesome experience here in the town of New Market. I love the close community feel for me. I don't think I'd do well at a school like Exeter. I love knowing everybody and making relationships with everybody. That's been one of my favorite things about this school. A little bit about the school that helped me get to where I plan on going. Starting back in fifth grade, when we did things like squid dissections and outdoor weather stations, I was instantly hooked on science. I loved the hands-on stuff and learning about just basically how the world around us works. Up through middle school, we did a lot with introduction to biology, and then as we got into high school, it was a lot more specific. I took a class on environmental science this year, and I was very neat to divulge in that side of science, along with anatomy, where I got to look a little more into how the body works, and that was awesome. And I chose zoology as my major as of right now, because I hope to do something with animals. I'm not sure if that'll lead more towards like the veterinary side or like field study side, but I figure starting with zoology will help me get an idea for what'll come next, so that's what I got.
My name's Alyssa Cody. I'm going to UMAE next year, and I'm studying business. Throughout my four years in high school, I played basketball and soccer, which I think helped shape me into the leader that I'm going to be.
You have to move closer to the microphone. I was great. It's about wonderful sound system.
Hi, I'm Ashley Berthew. I am going to St. Anselm College in Georgetown, New Hampshire, next year, and I'm majoring in secondary education with a focus in math or science, I'm not sure yet. New Market has definitely helped me because I was fortunate enough to travel to the Dominican Republic last year on a service learning trip, and we did get to teach kids down there how to speak English, and that was sort of my turning point, and I was like, yes, this is what I need to do with the rest of my life. I was also able to intern in three different classes over the past two years, one being second grade, the other being seventh grade, and the last being fifth grade this year. And I can tell you that last year, I thought I wanted to be a second grade teacher, and being in a second grade class definitely told me that I did not want to. So that was definitely so helpful. I was able to narrow in on my grade level and sort of the subject that I wanted to go into.
Hi, I'm Anna, and I'm going to UNH next year to study nutrition, and my overall career goal is to become a registered dietitian.
All right. Hi, my name's Donovan Harrington. I am going to attend Colby Soder College in New London, New Hampshire for nursing, and my plan, once I graduate, is to get my license in nursing and become a licensed nurse practitioner.
Hi, I'm Julia. I'm going to UNH as a chemistry major, and New Market's really helped shape my major that I'm going into, because I've had many fantastic chemistry teachers, chemistry teacher and other science teachers along the way. It started in like seventh grade, stood there, and I like, that was the first class I really wanted to do well in, because it was just so interesting. We had these different dissections and all that, and that kind of helped shape where I wanted to go, so.
It's great to hear that, you know, Ms. Alberg and I and Ms. Nato had the opportunity last week to go to the top 10 lunch. We've been able to interact with these students, and a couple of things struck me then and are striking me again now. You know, there are a variety of different students with a variety of different areas of expertise. People were talking about sports, people were talking about service learning, great educators that they've had education from. So, you know, it looks like this group is a great example of the well-rounded education that New Market students get. So thank you, you all, for coming to share your stories with us. We wish you the best and all success as you move forward in all that you do, and if you at some point want to come back and share with future school boards what you're doing too, we'd appreciate that as well, because you guys and the rest of the students in the district are the reasons why we sit here twice a month or more. So thank you for coming and bringing yourselves and your families tonight. To the parents, thank you for sharing your students with us in the classroom. It's great to see the partnerships between home and school to create young people that we have here that are going to be future leaders in whatever field that they choose, a variety, nutrition, nursing, we heard several things, so thank you all for that.
So don't leave, because we're going to recognize our retiring educators, and then we have some things to present to everyone who's here this evening, and we'll do that and take a little bit of a break. So if you can hang on a few minutes longer, that would be great. And maybe your classmates will make it.
Yes.
I can tell you, they hadn't even started presenting the certificates when we left at seven.
Oh, wow.
They had just wrapped up scholarships, so it may be a bit.
He's not a student.
So to those who are beginning their careers, perfect segue to those who are looking at the next stages in their careers. And I read a news article recently that there was a high school principal who didn't properly source something in a speech, and he's looking for a job now. So according to dictionary.com, "A decade is best described as a period of 10 years, beginning with a year whose last digit is zero. In just 30 days, three gifted educators with a combined nine decades of service to the children of New Market will retire." That's nine combined decades. As a high school teacher and special educator, our first retiree's work ethic alone speaks for itself. Helen has given so much to so many over the years, and while she deserves time to rest and enjoy the things that she wants to do, she'll be sorely missed by all of us. The first retiree I present is Ms. Helen Hoffman. As a sixth grade social studies teacher, our next retiree has welcomed each new crop of mules with excitement, care, and professionalism. Her skillful teaching has had a positive impact on many young people. Her availability to all staff, veteran and new, has been a staple of her time here. Congratulations, Ms. Nancy Taggada. Much of our final retiree's skill and hard work is done behind the scenes, but we've all realized the fruits of his labor. Not only has he helped shape the future of many a mule, but his wisdom, work ethic, and commitment to the education in our town and our school is unmatched. What we see speaks volumes, but as I said, his work behind the scenes can never be measured. Congratulations, Mr. Tom Pathless.
Any of you can feel free to say anything if you would like to.
I'd like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here all these years. I really think this has been family for me, and I will miss you tremendously. I spent the last 18 and a half years in the New Market school system, and it was my home, only from home. My five children were grown, so gave me the opportunity to work with young children again and help them to develop into eventually young adults. And I've worked in a school system that was so wonderful, and I thank each and every one of you.
My last position, I spent a decade in this system, and I thought, how could I ever spend that long anywhere? And I've been here 19 years, so obviously there was a real connection with this town that I felt over the years, and I mention it every year at our class night, which will be coming up next Thursday. It's a real special community, real special kids, and it's been a privilege and honor to work for them and with them all these years, and so I thank you very much.
And I'd like to bring Mr. Inturski up to the front to speak about our next retiree, and then I'll...
We're sharing, who's going to start? I'll let you start.
So our next retiree, who's been here for eight years, is Ms. Jean Parsons. I've been lucky enough to share a door with her this year as I've moved into my role, and it's been enlightening, the wealth of knowledge that Jean shares regards to special education, students, teachers, and law, has been tremendous for me, and oftentimes we're opening up the door and chatting and sharing ideas and philosophies, but it's all for the same common purpose, and that's for the staff and students at New Market. I can tell you, she's a dedicated soul, and she's going to be sorely missed. One thing I do, probably who misses their conversations, is the lunchroom is right next to my office, too. So I get all the skinny, even though it's not that bad going on, so we'll need someone to replace that side of Jean. So Jean, we're going to miss you, and thank you for all you've done. Well, as the principal in my role this year, thank you.
And I'll just add on to that, you know, I had the opportunity to work as a special education director for a few years, and I know what a difficult job it is, and I know that Jean has touched the lives of so many families and students who are out in the world today and who are yet to go out into the world, but we greatly appreciate her service, and I will say she's not only been active here in New Market, but really at a statewide level advocating for students and families. And it's been a privilege to have you here. We will certainly miss you, and I thank you for all of your work for the district.
Would you like to come up and say anything? Okay, perfect.
I just hope I don't start to cry now. I have to say, it's been a real honor, and it was a really fun time to work for New Market. I wish I had found you earlier in my career, because this is a very special community. I've lived in Durham for 30 years, and I did not know what a gem New Market is. If I had known what a gem, I would have moved here with my own children. It's been a complete joy. Having Chris as an extra neighbor has been terrific. I just looked at him this morning, and I commented, you know, I was a little apprehensive, you know, new person, my brand-new neighbor, I just didn't know. What a welcome addition. He's fabulous in his job, he's doing a terrific job, he's really making a difference, and I love having him next door. It's been great, he's helped me out with one of my most challenging cases this year in a positive way. It's just been a treat. And this one. We are so fortunate to have Merrick Nado. This is my 42nd year in public education, and I have never worked for or with a superintendent as capable and talented and as involved in the community as she is. I'm sitting next to a couple of young people who had her as their advisor for their senior project. I don't know if you have any ideas.
I still have to present next week.
She has to do one London. She is so unusual. She comes in with an outfit, you know, a costume for Cat and the Hat Day. So again, it was hard for me to leave, knowing that we finally have the perfect person at the helm, and it was such a joy to work with, and so supportive of the special thing. But in a way, it also made it easier, because I know I'm leaving with just really excellent hands. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nights like these make my heart sing, because, you know, listening to these educators who have been decades-long educators in a variety of different districts, a couple of things rang true in all of them. They talked about the family that they felt here in our special community, the special students, and the dedication that they felt as educators and the community to them. And thank you all for your service to our students, and we wish you all the best in all you do. Have fun, and if you do fun things, come back and tell us what the fun things are, because now's your chance to do those things you might not have a chance to do. So thank you all very much. And we will take a break and go out and meet everyone and hand out some things. Thank you all for coming tonight and for sharing these milestones with us.
Thank you.
If we each want to take a couple, that'll work.
Call down.
Yes. Now we call down and take our... Take them off.
All right, I think we're back on. We had a nice time meeting with the parents and the top ten students for the year and the retirees and their families as well. It's always fun to have events like that, but we will proceed with the rest of the business for the evening. Yes, ma'am?
Just reminding you of one other item.
Are we gonna do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. We have another recognition that I was forgetting about, and this one is tough because this person left huge gaping shoes for me to fill, and I'm still limping my way through. But as I will say, this person is Nate Loney. Nate, come on up. Nate served as the-
Oh, you're not on mic.
Oh, yes, I'm over. Nate served as a Newmarket School Board Chair for two years and served on for how many years, Nate, as a member? Five?
No, just three and a half.
Three and a half.
And, you know, it got busy for us at the end because we were starting the building process and everything, and we wanted to take- Al especially was concerned about making sure that we recognized you properly, and we all agreed because you helped-
I miss him too.
You helped bring the board as it was under your leadership to a cohesive, effective team. We all had an array of assignments, and you allowed us to do those successfully and report back and make sure that we were in line with the board wanted, and you fostered communication for us and encouraged us to work as a team, and I appreciate it greatly. I think, you know, one of the things that you talked about was changing the tone, the tone that came from the board as individuals and collectively, and you did that for us, and we appreciate it, and my goal now is to take those reins and not let them go too much, but maybe keep it going. But I thank you for the way that you welcomed me as an individual to the board, sort of midterm, taught me some things that I needed to learn to move forward, and helped us all be successful. So Nate, it's good to have you here. Thank you. Thank you. If anyone wants to add anything, please feel free.
I've said it before, but I'll say it's worth noting again, and I don't want to cover stuff that Kim already said, but having been in leadership roles on boards and boards and Tufts, in transition, Nate, you really brought things together. You were the calm hand in the storm, and all the achievements we've had over the past couple of years with the facilities, with hiring Meredith. And I'm missing tons of other stuff, Nate. It wouldn't have been possible without your leadership, and it takes a toll on somebody, on your other time and in an otherwise busy life, so I greatly appreciate your service.
Thank you.
I was in the Bahamas with you both.
I'm sorry you had to come back.
So I have enjoyed our phone calls. We went through some times together, and I'm very glad the end, it all worked out for all of us, and we all get to see the community come back together. So it was very important, and I'm glad to have worked with you.
It was your fault.
My fault?
It was all your fault.
It wasn't my fault.
We stood down at the pier in Portsmouth getting ready to get on a boat for the field trip of students, and I didn't know her that well, well enough so that she walked over and planted both feet with a little bit of sound as it snapped on the hot colored paper or the dock, whatever it was, and said, "So, is it you or isn't it? Are you gonna run? Are you gonna come? Are you gonna go? There's this conversation going on. We need somebody on the board, and I know that somebody has mentioned it to you, but you haven't said anything yet that you really should, and smart enough." I shouldn't really use those words, but that's what I said in November, was, "Let's go." So all of that is your fault. Thank you for everything.
The community will never understand the turmoil that you helped lead us through. It was, in my career, probably one of the toughest dynamic I've ever been part of, and I agree with Mike and Elizabeth, that the, it takes some unimaginable leadership to keep people on course during those tough times because it wasn't, they weren't good times. They were terrible times, and we got through it. And it was, Nate, because of you, no question about it.
It's a great team, and you guys, I should never admit this, but I watched you on TV. I haven't watched every minute, but it was amazing when you look at the clock and think, "I need to, oh, no, I don't, but I could just check in." And I'm really proud that things continue to move in just a beautiful direction. There are so many things on the plate still, and I know, working on a project by day, I know how much work is going on right now and how much you all are involved, and I appreciate all of the people. We talked several times about all of the people that have been working with the board in the community, the support that we had through the process. You know, folks that used to sit in the audience, sometimes occasionally do, but continue to send their thoughts and concerns along so they could be received, considered, and have an impact on all of our efforts. I just commend you for continuing to respect every opinion, every voice, and make everyone feel like they have a seat at the table, and I think that was really the goal, and it continues to be that way, and I appreciate that as a member of the community. I thank you. It was a real quiet, real quiet, calm exit tonight. I didn't mind that, but this is wonderful, and I'm really humbled, and so thank you for asking me to come back to keep up the good work. It's, it is, it's a lot of work. Unless you've done it, you've done it on board after board, and you folks have served in so many ways, I tell you, it was not- I have served boards, right, for all of these years, and you sit at the same meetings, and I prepare for it, but I get paid to prepare for it all day long, that's what we do. It was different, you know, and I have to say, I think I said it to you before, and then I'll get out of your hair. I used to, I mean, I sit at board meetings all the time, it's part of the job, but the first night that I sat here at the microphone and talked to the board then about a budget cut, I shook, I was queaking. And even tonight, having spent years sitting with you to come and be in front of you again in our community, here in front of our people, it always leaves me a little nervous. It's great to suggest the gravity of the work that you do, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
I did want to say one thing, not to make, go ahead. As I was looking at the top ten, and, you know, and all of us, all parents involved for our kids, our community, all the parents, we're all volunteers, we're a very important part of our community. It just shows, again, our small little town, what we can do if we all support our kids and support our education, support our teachers.
I think it goes back to the countless people that talked about the family atmosphere, the community, and all those things this evening on all sides of it. So we're in a fortunate location, so thank you, Nate, again. Moving right along, Julia, we will have your sadly last report to the board because you will be graduating prior to our next meeting, so I will listen.
All right, so last day of school for students is June 23rd. It's June 27th for staff. High School, the track team at the state championship, we have a new state title with Dakota Joe winning the 100-meter dash.
Oh, great.
He also placed second in the 200-meter dash. The girls' four-by-eight placed third, and the girls' four-by-four placed third as well. All these teams and members are gonna be going on to the meet at championship on Saturday. So if you don't know, it's divisions, state meets, and then the top three placers from each divisional meet goes on to the meet of champions, and it's interesting. Softball finished their season with a record of four and 14. Baseball finished their regular season with a record of 13 and three, and their first playoff game is gonna be Saturday, and it's gonna be home at four o'clock. Senior week is next week, so Monday, we are going to have presentations of senior projects. Tuesday is gonna be senior banquet, and it's gonna be at Atkinson Country Club. Wednesday is senior outing at Canaby Lake Park. Thursday is senior night or awards night, and Friday is graduation, and both the awards night and graduation are both at six o'clock at the high school. The improv show is tomorrow at seven o'clock, and it's full of laughs, so people should go and attend. Eighth grade is currently on their field trip to AMC and will return tomorrow. Underclassmen awards will be June 12th from 1:30 to 2:30. Finals begin for everyone else on June 19th and will continue through June 22nd, and the makeup exams are on June 23rd. Eighth grade commencement will be June 22nd at six o'clock. Step-up day is June 23rd. In elementary school, there's gonna be a PTA ice cream social at six o'clock and a movie at seven o'clock. This is next week. I can't remember the day.
It's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow.
June 2nd.
Tomorrow is walk to school day, and field day for elementary school is Friday, June 16th.
Thank you very much, Julia.
When's graduation?
Next Friday.
Friday, June 9th.
6:00 PM. Meredith, would you like to give your report?
I could, or we could move up Mr. Andruski to talk about the professional development master plan.
That would be a wonderful idea. Mr. Andruski, will you please share the master plan with us, the PD master plan?
I believe you all got copies. Just gonna highlight some changes in this master plan. As you can see, it was a little outdated, and we had to have a renewed. And it's for a real major purpose. Before I do that, we have a PD committee. I know you guys saw my presentation from video a couple of weeks ago and talked about some of the things that have happened over the year. We have a PD committee that meets throughout the year to provide professional development opportunity for our teachers and staff throughout the year. And this year, we've really tried to make it theme-based, you know, what do the schools need so we're not adding new things onto their plate? So it's really focused regards curriculum and instruction and data for our students. With that, we have this subset of people served on the professional development writing committee, and that was Amy Rossi, Sean Pine, Chris Mazzoni, Sarah Denham, Justin Kane, and myself. So we had a good representation of teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, and union representation. So Elizabeth was serving on as the school board member, so we ran things by her as well. In this master plan, we really did some reductions, and there's certain guidelines that we had to follow through the state, but this work started back in August. We knew that the plan was outdated, so we met as a committee in August with Bill Rossman, Department of Education, who oversees all the master plans throughout the state of New Hampshire because they have to be approved next step after we're done here by the state of New Hampshire. approved next step after we're done here by the state of New Hampshire. And Bill talked to us about what we needed to put in that plan. We met with him again in October to look at exemplary plans that other school districts had provided to him. And he looked at three from the surrounding areas, visited with some of the members, and asked why they put certain things into their plans. So it really helped us shape what exemplary looked like in other districts in the state so that we could model that. From there, we had to break it down and the last plan was 49 pages. What we present to you today is 20 pages. So we really tried to get to the point of why do we provide professional development? And that really started with our purpose on page one. And the reason that we provide professional development is we want to see teachers grow when students are growing. If our teachers are not growing, our students can't grow. So the amount of clock hours that we put in professional development, the 75 hours that we have, that's very obtainable every year with the in-house professional development and how we fit the contract structures of teachers who go out of district in four days and $400 to provide out of district professional development. But it's to come back and so that teachers are current, they're using best practices, they're challenging our students, and they're setting up a collegial workplace so that they can share things with their peers and that we can all get better at what we do. That's the purpose behind professional development. And if people aren't doing that, then they should be working in this district. And that's the job of Meredith and I, if they're not getting these hours, they're not showing growth, we're not going to recommend them to be recertified to the state of New Hampshire because that's not the teachers we want. That's not the exemplary plan that we're putting together. And that's really the message that we tried to put through this plan. So that's really where it started because on that purpose on page one, and we really tried to say, this is student-focused, this is teacher-focused, and it's about getting better at what we do every day by continuous learning. A couple of other changes that are significant from the last plan. Amy did a great job on the data sources and that's all the different data assessment that we use to assess our kids through our teachers and how we use that data to inform our instruction. That didn't change much, other than, you know, neat gap, now smarter balance being there, but some of the other assessments that we used. But if you turn us to page eight and nine, that was where a couple of changes did occur. And that's with how we use our goal-setting with our teachers so that we're doing interim progress reports on that January 15th day. Every year, each teacher has to do an individual yearly plan for their personal goal, how they're going to get better as their own individual teacher, have a building goal, what's the building focus on and how they're going to use that, and then the district goal. And this year, the district goal is how do we use technology to inform instruction? Building goals were differentiation at the elementary school and at the junior, senior high school. They were starting to move towards standards and essential questions, so that was theirs and then anybody could choose their individual goal. So we put January that we wanted our administrators to really check in with all the teachers when they're doing their evaluations, their observations, how you working on your goals? So there's our first check-ins and that's one of the things we talked about, doing mid-year goals. We had it in previous plans, we didn't really follow it. So we really wanted that to be an area that we're checking in with our staff mid-year, how you doing? The other change that we wanted to talk about was the three-year goals. So every year, every three years, you have to be recertified in the state of New Hampshire. These clock hours help to work to get you to that certification. We put in there that we want our administrators to meet yearly and to talk about those three-year goals. Those three-year goals, just because we put them down on paper, should not be etched in stone. It should be fluid. And if we're changing and if we're learning, really three-year goals should change.
What does recertification mean every three years?
So, for example, Meredith and I are certified as superintendents in the state of New Hampshire. Every three years, we have to do so many hours by this plan, which is 75 for that certification, so that we get recertified as superintendent to the state of New Hampshire so that we can work as a superintendent.
And those are clock hours, right?
That's clock hours, how we choose. Yep.
Is it a program you attend?
No, it's in-house professional development that we offer. So when the kids have half-day and we do in-house professional development, you get clock hours for that. So that's 2.75 on those days and when we have a full day, it's 7.5. But if a teacher goes to a workshop out of district, then they can come back with eight hours for that.
Okay.
All those hours, we track and it's talked about in this plan. And over a certification over three years, you have to get 75. 45 in your specialization of your area and then there's six other strands that you have to get 30 hours to demonstrate together. So it's very doable. If someone takes a college course, there's 40 hours right there. You know, you attend workshops and in this plan, you'll see there's 19 different ways that we identify that teachers can get hours for certification, as well as paraprofessionals because there is a paraprofessional certification. So we documented the different ways that people can do it and tried to apply correct hours for when people do that. And one area that we looked at in those 19 different strategies is when people serve on committees. The committee that, they do this, they don't get paid for it. And these are hours after school, you know. And the writing committee, that was a good 20 hours of after-school time. There was some time embedded that we set aside that people took upon themselves. So we wanted to make that, if people are serving as committees and making changes and positive changes in the school district, we wanted to recognize that with more professional development, time and clock hours. So that was a significant change.
Yeah.
The other significant change that we see in here is that we just changed what paperwork was due. It used to be you could do a workshop and then turn your paperwork in. Three months later, you can get credit for it. Well, we wouldn't really do that with our students. So we talked about, you know, after 30 days, you should have a good reflection on that workshop that you went to to be able to get your clock hours. So if you go to a workshop that we've spent money as a district, you'll come back and then within 30 days, and there's a form that we have that's part of this pact, you submit that paperwork to the superintendent's office. If it's a class, Meredith takes care of it. If it's workshop, I take care of that piece of it. And making sure that people are going to worthwhile. And if it's a really good workshop, how do we bring that knowledge back into our teachers? So they rate every workshop. We also get, you know, workshops where they say, "It wasn't very good." So we put the word out, "Hey, we don't want anybody else going to that workshop because that wasn't money well-spent from what the feedback we got." So again, it gives us a database of what's really good professional development and what's not. And then the last significant change you saw in here is we never had an appeals process. If someone doesn't agree with us saying, "No, this workshop didn't count," what was the process to go through there? So we outlined that in this process as well. And then at the end, it's just appendix of the different forms we have, which the tech department this year, again, above and beyond, they made all these forms now fillable. So no longer does a teacher have to go online, print it out, write it out, send it down to myself and Meredith. They can actually fill it out online and email it to us. So the paperwork has become much more quicker and more efficient from building to the SAVU office.
Chris, I probably have a lot of questions just because I'm new and it's very different. I shouldn't say very different. It's different from what I assume. How many of the teachers or are there a lot of teachers who are certified in more than one area and have to juggle all of that?
They do. Yep.
Because it's a small school and I know, I came from a system where.
So 75 certifications?
I have five. I renewed my five this January. You have additional hours in each content area.
75?
Just 40 in that area.
Forty-five in each of those additional areas and then your 30 general.
Wow.
That you have a whole list.
Yeah. A lot of my questions were about the assessment part of it and I don't know if we'll do that. I was curious about the various kinds of assessment that you're using and if this is something that I need to sit down with one of you and have it explained, but I thought some of it might be just really informative to our community to understand how teachers are assessing children's work nowadays and really understand that it's more than taking a pencil and paper test.
Yep.
I want to know, are there some built-in rubrics in any of the grades? At the end of my career, I was working with preschool and I had, that was my, it was look at a rubric for the way the kids moved. They put one foot up and the next foot up on the stairs, that kind of thing. Are there things built into some of those assessments?
Yeah, there is. And we're getting better and better at that and adapting more and more. So, for example, the junior, senior high school, we're recreating a new writing rubric that would be used throughout the entire school, developed by the language art department on how we want writing assessed in every single content area. So even if I'm doing writing in PE, there's going to be the same rubric, the same form, so we're assessing it the same way. Work habits is another rubric that we're establishing. The junior, senior high school has established a bunch of school-wide rubrics as part of our NIAS process and the elementary school, being a standard-based school, they have built-in rubrics a lot for making assessments there. So that's really natural based on their report card. But at the junior, senior high school, that's a focus for next year is building more rubrics that will address school-wide writing, reading, oral presentations, digital media, those type of things.
Just pause briefly. After Chris's presentation at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about having presentations on particular curricula areas or programs in focus. So that, those meetings would be a great time for us to delve into the detail of the assessment piece.
Right. And that's what I was, one of the notes I made was, could we have some of those explanations? We've had nice presentations about a lot of things and I thought, yeah, that would be really informative to me and lots of others. And maybe that's where I should...
But it had under future agenda items.
Yes, yes. Because I had QPS, DIBELS. DIBELS, I'm a little bit familiar with. A lot of the assessments were New Hampshire-based and I'm not familiar with the New Hampshire-based ones.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for all of us on the board as well as the community to hear those things.
Right.
And how we utilize the data that is retrieved from those assessments to determine what we do looking forward.
Yeah, I mean, that's really, and that's Amy, because that's her job. I mean, she has grade-level meetings where she's taking the data, breaking it down with grade levels, either about a kid or a program, so that we can inform our instruction. So I think that's a great question. She can tell you how we use the data for every single one of these assessments because she's involved with it. You know, it's a massive job and she does a fantastic job with it.
Right. I guess, a lot of those. NWEA, I'm not familiar with, AMES, QPS.
Yeah. So again, those are a variety of the student assessments and we can come back and tell you about.
Right. Okay. Great. Yes. My thought was it would be really helpful for parents to understand that.
Sure. And I would say it goes, while it's a piece of our professional development master plan.
Right.
That's much more focused around the teacher growth, whereas those are about the student growth. To measure that, obviously, teachers need to know that.
Right.
Right? And we are evaluating our teachers in part on how well they utilize data that's available to them.
Right.
But the depth focus, the in-depth focus would come with a student evaluation.
And my other question was then, how are teachers trained to do that data input and then how do they access and make that data usable afterwards because...
The good news is with many of them now, we don't have to do manual data entry. So that is a plus. But there are still a lot of components of working with data that are always evolving.
Chris, this is really well-done. I went through it. I liked the cheat sheet of all the testing modes. And I just, I guess I would comment and thank everybody who contributed to it, but to me, it's a sign of a healthy organization when you're devoting real-time and resources to something like this. Any place I've ever worked or like, any place I'd like to work at, I should say, did that. I just happened to hear a quote today that I guess applies from Richard Branson, that you train your people so they can leave and you treat them well so they don't. You know, I kind of see that in this, which is great. To me, a healthy organization can never do enough professional development. You know, and if people should happen to leave, so be it. You know, they'll remember where they came from.
Yes. And they miss us.
And I appreciate the diversity on the committee that came to these changes and that makes logical sense. I think, you know, as you said, as the teachers grow, the students grow. And as Mike just said, it's important just to focus on this.
And the other point is that what's really important, that people, when they say teachers only work 180 days and they have the summer off, that's not the case. We have teachers that work endlessly. They go home and work longer. They have, they're taking classes, they're raising their families. This just shows how much time and energy does go into a teacher's position and we need to really appreciate.
Yeah, just to build on that, Elizabeth, we applied to get money back from the Title 2A, which is federal money, which is dedicated to professional development. And we got some money set aside and when Meredith and I wrote the grant, it was for professional development so people could do work in the summer. We had over 50 staff members submit applications to do this summer activities proposal. 50 staff members. Now, we couldn't pay for all 50, but we're going to pay for a large portion of it. But they are working in the summer and what they're doing, they're building new curriculum or they're revising their curriculum or they're working as a grade level or they're working as a content team. Sean, Chris Mizoney, Meredith and I went through, like, "That's amazing. That's awesome." It was really neat and refreshing that we were at that stage and teachers like, "Yeah, I want to work." And so for 50 people, that's a credit to what we do and they are working in the summer because they want to start on the day one and be ready for our kids. And that's really a nice feeling to not be rushing, but to be ready to start the school year. And that's where we've become.
I think that, you know, there's been a paradigm shift in the district with the move away from facilities as we move forward towards that, to focus on the core things, professional development of teachers, curriculum options. Chris, you coming into your new role to focus on that, all those things. Meredith's coming in obviously to direct the educational plans that we have. It's a great time to be in the district.
Good team.
So thank you all.
Thank you for the presentation.
So just to be clear, we're not asking for board action on this item tonight. We wanted Chris to come in and share it with you. We will ask you to adopt this plan at the next meeting. If there's any additional feedback, please share that with me and we'll pass it along to the committee. They have another meeting next week.
We're going to have the staff. We've sent it to the staff, so they're going to, each building are going to go and present the changes just as I did today. They've all got it and there hasn't been any emails towards us, which is really a good sign. And then if there is any major changes that we missed, we'd be glad to. We meet again June 20th is our last meeting to get ready for the last couple of days of school. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Meredith, if you'd like to do your report now.
Okay. You know it's June when your list is as long as your arm. It is a very busy time of year in our school district, all school districts, but I'll try not to repeat anything that's already been said. National Honor Society induction for our junior and senior high students was last week. We also had our elementary school chorus and band concert and our last meeting was the night of the junior, senior high chorus and band concert at the music hall. There was a nice article in the newspaper. People had the opportunity to see that. We're sad that we missed it, but kudos to folks there. Julia mentioned the senior student presentations coming up on Monday. Mr. Andruski and I both have groups of students. There are four other groups who are presenting at the junior, senior high, but our groups are presenting in this building and so those presentations are open if people would like to attend them, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
So we have 9:00 a.m.?
Beginning at 9:00 a.m., both in the chambers as well as in the auditorium downstairs. So I have forewarned my group of students that there may be audience members in attendance, but we certainly would encourage people to attend. You'll hear similar things to what you heard from some of our students this evening, but in a bit more depth and get to hear really the personal stories and future plans of our graduates. So, pretty exciting.
Excellent.
You already mentioned the First Lady who is here today. I guess to see her with the kindergarten students a little bit later in the day as well. Tuesday evening was the town's Memorial Day parade. Our high school chorus and band students were there and performed. Our jump rope team was represented by about 75 students from the elementary school who marched in the parade or jumped in the parade, quite literally. And there was a great representation of just youth from across the community, from scouts and Little League and softball. Just really nice to see so many students and families out. It was a really nice community event and so I am very appreciative of the families and staff members who donated time to be there and bring folks along. And it's important, I think, in communities to acknowledge those traditions and express the appreciation for people who have made those sacrifices for our country. Julia mentioned movie night coming up on tomorrow, so soon. They're showing the film Hidden Figures, which people may not be familiar with, but it's about women, African-American women who joined NASA and were integral to the spaceflight. So that'll be a great opportunity and there's an ice cream social attached to that. Sea Coast Learning Collaborative, I talked with you about them a little bit at our last meeting. The Board of Directors meeting was yesterday. They are continuing to explore options for space for the upcoming school year, so we hope to report back to you on that in a couple of weeks. They remain in their temporary space through the end of this school year. We have our eighth grade students right now at the Appalachian Mountain Club hut on that trip. So they'll be returning tomorrow, midday, I think, or early afternoon. So we will be excited to hear about their adventures. Our Girls on the Run group, which is third through fifth grade girls from the elementary school, is participating on Saturday at the statewide race. And again, teacher coaches there who participated and I'm not sure how many girls in total, 25 or so, 20, thank you for that. The Budget Committee met. The budget committee met last week as well, I think. It all blurs together this time of year, but they met last week. Lisa and I both attended to present just sort of the fiscal update, the projections that we had shared with you at a previous meeting about where we expect to end the school year, information that's important to them as they think about forecasting for future years. The recreation department sponsored the community mixer. That was the same night as the elementary school concert, so last Thursday. But I wanted to acknowledge Melanie Tallon, who is a community volunteer. She was recognized there with the Community Volunteer of the Year Award. And Melanie is really helpful to us as a district and to students and families in New Market because she runs the 68 Hours of Hunger program. If people in the community aren't familiar with that, that program, 68 hours is from when school ends on Friday to when school resumes on Monday. And it's to support families with food insecurity. So students who might not have access and families who might not have access to food over the weekend can leave school on Friday with a backpack filled with food to carry them through the weekend. They bring those backpacks back to school the following week, they're refilled, and that continues throughout the school year. And so they provide that support to a lot of families in our community. And we're very grateful for that and we're, we're happy for Melanie that she received that recognition for all of her hard work. They are working with the New Market Community Church to continue that program through the summer. In the past, it's been a school-year-only program. So again, great news that that support is continuing. And if people are interested in learning more about 68 Hours of Hunger, there is a link on our school nutrition page of our website, but you can also go directly to 68 Hours of Hunger, New Market, and find contact information.
Do you have any particular needs?
I, I think monetary donations are always welcome. And otherwise, you know, I would encourage you to reach out to Melanie through her contact information that's provided there. And they can tell you, like, certain things that they would appreciate people shopping for.
It's an amazing program.
But it, yeah. Let's see. Our facilities director starts on Monday. I would do a little dance for that because I'm so happy. I have spent much of the last two weeks on facilities-related issues, which I'll, I'll delineate for you when we talk about the facilities committee, but I, I can't wait to have another pair of hands for that work. Let's see. One of those is our elementary bus loop, the fire access road that run, runs behind the elementary school. If you have had the opportunity to go behind the school, if you were behind there in the winter months or during the rainy season, which hopefully is sort of winding down for a little bit, you know that there are large potholes and drainage issues. We, in consultation with our public works director and fire chief, have concerns about our ability to maintain that road through the next school year, so we've been working with him. And our civil engineer will be meeting with him as well in the next couple of weeks to talk about how we best address that. A preliminary quote, working with the town's paving contractor to take care of those repairs for the next year. And this is, again, sort of a temporary repairs in the ballpark of $25,000. So we'll be looking at our options for that and report back to you on that. The New Market Business Association is starting an education committee. I think I mentioned that at the last meeting. So we're meeting Tuesday to get that up and running and plan out what exactly the hopes and dreams are for that committee. The third grade science fair is tomorrow morning at the elementary school. I can attest as a parent that students are very excited about these projects and very proud of their work and can't wait to share them with friends and family and, and younger students who are coming to visit them. Let's see. I have a couple other small things, I think. Oh, one of them is on the topic of technology. So we were slated, as you know, through budget and it's carried in our technology budget to replace a number of devices that we have. Many of the devices at the high school, which are now five years old, are desktop machines. But in conversations with Chris Mazzoni, we are contemplating replacing those with more portable devices, as that's the direction that certainly society has moved in the last several years. We think that would allow us to have a much larger number of devices available. Potentially, we could contemplate going to one-to-one at the high school level as early as next school year. So we'll, we'll again, share some more information with you about that. Both Jason Carey and his assistant, Chris Cooney, as well as our administration across the district have, have had time to sort of pro, process different pieces of this, gone to a number of trainings. Some, some folks have experience of being in districts that are one-to-one already. And so, so we've outlined a lot of, of pieces and considerations for that. So again, we'll report back to you on that. But the prospect of, of having more student access to devices, I think, is, is important as we move into the future. And so if we can do that in a way that doesn't cost taxpayers anymore and that those devices can be safely transported back and forth and utilized by students, for us, that includes looking at some content filtering options that would be ineffective when students are off of school grounds as well as when they are on it, then I think there are some real possibilities there for us.
Jump Rope Show.
Yes.
It's Saturday.
The thing in-
No, it's called, the big jump-
That is true. Thank you. Be big. Jump Rope Damboree.
Thank you. That's what it's called.
Yes. Exciting. A lot is happening. Meredith, thank you for that report. Moving along to reports, I know there've been some meetings. Are there any committee reports that anyone has tonight? Mike, anything from your building?
Don't really have much to add. We met, I'm losing track of time, Meredith, help me.
The 21st. The 24th, thank you.
We met with the civil engineer, civil engineers, I should say plural, and they went over some of the issues they're looking into, some of the site issues right now. Minutes for those, for that meeting are posted, I think, up on the, on the district website or facility committee website. Our next meeting is June 7th, which is next Thursday, at 6:30. I just noticed as I was looking at-
Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry. And the meeting on the 21st, I think, was at 4:00.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
That changed, I think, after the pack it was prepared.
Yep, yep. So, but things, things are moving along. We welcome if people either want to attend or watch on TV. Last meeting, we had a technical issue come up at the last minute, so we, or somebody was unable to attend, so we couldn't film it. So we apologize for that, but we'll try to get them up there so people want to see them attend.
And I expect there will be a blurb going out community-wide tomorrow, just with a brief update about that meeting, just to tag on to that a little bit. Our kitchen consultant was here last Friday, works with the architect to lay out the plans for the kitchens in both buildings, worked with our food service manager and director, managers and director to walk through both kitchens, look at equipment that we currently have, talk about what can be reused. And I have to say, he was so impressed by the care that has been taken of the equipment in our kitchen. He couldn't believe the age of some of the equipment that we have because it has been maintained so well. So that's just a real tribute to our food service staff and the care they take and the hard work that they've put into taking care of our students. But I, I, watching this process, I can tell you, it, people can't even envision what it's going to be like to have a kitchen where they are not using the workarounds that they've relied on for so many years, where they are, you know, pulling down trays of hot food from over their heads because from a space capacity right now, they are having to maneuver things that way, which, you know, in a kitchen today wouldn't pass muster because it's a safety concern. So just amazing and exciting for them to, to think about the possibilities. You mentioned the civil engineer. We've got a soil testing that's going to be done in the upcoming weeks and wetlands review of, of our sites. We have, let's see. The part of our requirement for state funding, should that become available, is work with the Division of Historical Resources. So we've been able finally to obtain someone to come in and do that work. So they'll be reviewing the high school building and submitting what's called an architectural inventory of the building for review by the State Division of Historical Resources, as well as reviewing the McGrath property because of the age of that property. So that's part of the requirement for potential state funding. So those, those pieces are moving along as well. And yes, I think that's it.
Any other-
Does the bond go for sale on the 6th?
Yes, it does.
Today.
Yes. It said we should know pretty immediately what happens, correct?
We should.
And we know that you delivered the paperwork for us and got it stamped and ready to go.
I did not take any chances. It was hand-delivered.
Any other committee reports from anyone?
Meredith and I attended both the SST board meeting a week ago Monday and we went to the graduation tonight. Both were really impressive. I, I had not been exposed to them and I have a tour scheduled for a week from tomorrow and our students start at 7:42 in the morning. And so I told Margaret I would be there at 7:30 so that I could see our students in action. But it was over 250 graduates tonight and I think that the scholarships went on for an hour and a half. I was-
That's excellent.
It was incredible. Incredible, the community support for our students there and the amazing things that they're doing.
And, and the auditorium was filled to standing capacity.
Yes. I mean, people were literally sitting on the steps and Margaret had to say, I'm the daughter of the fire chief, you'll have to get off, off the stairs and sit in these 25 seats that are down here that are open. And as the, the daughter of the milkman, my father has a dairy science degree and so does my brother, it was fascinating to me to see that the, I think, three of the FFA, the Future Farmers of America scholarships went to young women. And I think three of the scholarships that went to culinary arts, former home act teacher, went to young men. And I'm saying, yay, Title IX.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Moving on to action items, we have some minutes to approve. We first have minutes from our April 11th meeting. Does anyone have any, notice any amendments to those minutes? If they are, that there are not any, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
An emotion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKinney. To move, to approve the minutes of May 11th, is there any discussion, any further discussion? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
I'm Steve.
Mike, thank you. Next, we have minutes from, public and non-public minutes from May 18th. Does anyone have any amendments to those? If not, I will, I seek a motion to approve those minutes, both the public and non-public.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Mr. Kennison and a second from Ms. Alberg to approve the May 18th public and non-public minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next, we'll move to the approval of the manifests.
I move that we approve the manifest payroll, the regular payroll for $259,537.04 for tomorrow and then the accounts payable manifest for $315,475.06.
Second. On a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Mr. Kennison to approve the manifest as listed, is there any discussion? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Manifest are approved. The next thing that we have is a approval of a donation that we received. We received, Jean Parsons, on behalf of the special ed department, accepted a donation, well, was, were given the offer of a donation for $1,000 for special education and equipment and supplies donated from a former New Market student in appreciation for the special education service and support he received while attending school at New Market. So that's very neat. I seek a motion to approve this $1,000 donation.
So moved. Second.
On a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Ms. Alberg to approve this, accept this donation kindly given from a former New Market student in appreciation for all things that were done for him. Is there any discussion of it?
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. It's very neat and I think it speaks volumes of the student and the education that he received. So wonderful. If there's no other discussion, move to vote and accept this $1,000 donation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. All right. The next thing is the MOU, which I'm not seeing. Here it is. That's why I'm not seeing it.
Okay. We hope that the fifth time is the charm. All joking aside, so this is the memorandum of understanding for us to share the facilities director services with the town. Again, this, this position is a town employee.
Right.
The board saw the job description some months ago, I believe February, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
As well as a draft MOU at that time. If you read item three, so because this is a shared MOU with the town, we're just clarifying that the school facility department shall remain an independent department. In other words, it is not being subsumed by the town. It remains our department with our employees. And item, under item 4A, as it relates to the school, the facilities director selects and recommends persons to be hired, disciplined, discharged, or promoted, and supervises head
Any questions about this MOU as presented? I know we had some specific questions the last time. Have those been addressed?
Yeah, I met with Steve on Monday and I think there were a couple of open questions, but I think he and Greg will resolve any questions that Greg may have.
Okay.
And I think that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Hearing that, are we prepared to vote on this MOU? All right. Then I seek a motion to approve the MOU as written in this version.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. Kennison, Ms. Kennison, Ms. McKinney, we are voting to approve the memorandum of understanding-
Not sure, rumor.
Sorry, Dawn. For the facilities director who's starting on Monday. Any discussion? Ann Perry.
Get him in.
Any discussion at all?
Is he going to be here?
He'll be in this building, yes.
Yes, we should all come and introduce ourselves to him when he comes. Hearing no discussion, we're going to move to vote. All those in favor of approving this MOU as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved. The last thing that we have on our agenda is the-
Two things.
Two things. Are we gonna, or I thought we were gonna move this one or no?
We, we have two things, but in order to get to those two things, we first need to have a non-public session.
Oh, both of them. Yes, okay. Thank you. I was not understanding. All right. So we need to move into non-public session under RSA 91A32A, RSA 91A32B, which is, the first one is dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee. The second is the hiring of any person as a public employee. And the third is RSA 91A32C, matters which might negatively affect the reputation of someone in town. So all those in, we're going to take a roll call vote. I seek a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
See what I did there?
Second.
On a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Ms. Alberg, we're going to take a roll call vote to go into non-public. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.